As is typical, we will start with the special town meeting and then we will... I opened both at the same time. We'll deal with the business of the special town meeting first and then we'll proceed to the business of the annual town meeting. Before we begin, if you could just rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Since we last met, we have lost a few members of our community and I just want to remember them at this moment. Margaret A. Ford, Dana Larson, James McDermott, Evelyn Minehold, Kathleen O'Brien, James Wild, and John J. Ferry. We'll be honoring Mr. Ferry a little bit later on in the evening, but if we could please have a moment of silence in their memory. Thank you. Couple of announcements before we get to the article. I want to recognize a few people. First of all, we have our state representative, Josh Cutler, joins us tonight. And I'd also like to give a warm welcome to Michael McHugh, who has been recently hired as our town administrator, and he has joined us. As you came in, a couple of things were going on outside. One was the Conservation Commission was handing out a questionnaire to get people's opinions about open space and recreation. If you could please spill that out, maybe during some of the duller moments of town meeting, and then turn it back in as you depart the hall. Also, we had a demonstration on electronic voting a couple of weeks ago. I set up...oh, thank you very much, Bill. I set up a special committee to investigate electronic voting. The powers of this committee are simply to report back to me and to the Selectmen and the Finance Committee at the end of the year, if not sooner. It's an idea that Whitman is working on. I'm not quite sure whether I'm in favor or opposed to it at this point. Hopefully, we'll get some good investigation and some good results. But if you'd like to try out the electronic voting, they're open in the lobby. As far as the rules go, if you're following at home, the rules will be from town meeting time. Get your copy out, follow along. And also, as we start most meetings, if I could have a...I'm making a motion to allow me to call certain quantums a vote. Some of these votes require a nine-tenths vote or a two-thirds vote. If I get this blanket, okay, I can declare that it's nine-tenths or two-thirds without it being unanimous. If someone doubts my call on the voting, of course, we'll go to a counted ballot, but this just streamlines the process. So can I have a second for that?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Thank you very much. Move on...oh, I'm told by the registrars that we have 268 voters in the hall for the beginning of the meeting. That's a lot more than we usually have. Welcome. Thank you for coming out tonight. Just very quickly, to my right are the Board of Selectmen and to my left are the Finance Committee. The Finance Committee helps...well, they make recommendations on the budget and all financial matters, and we'll be getting to them at the annual town meeting, Article 5. But along the way as well. So we will begin with the special town meeting, Article 1. Mr. Howard.
I move the town will vote to transfer $55 from free cash to pay unpaid bills from FY 2015.
One moment, Mr. Howard. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Howard.
These funds are needed to pay for bills received after the close of fiscal year 2015.
And this vote requires a nine-tenths vote. So all those in favor of Article 1...oh, any discussion on Article 1? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 1 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nay...those opposed, nay. The ayes have it by a nine-tenths margin. Article 2, Mr. McGann.
I move the town will vote to transfer $137,450 from free cash to supplemental appropriations previously voted at the annual town meeting of May 2015 for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2015 for various town departments as printed in the warrant.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. McGann.
The purpose of this article is to supplement a number of line items in the current fiscal year budget fiscal year 16 in order to fund a number of additional expenses associated with the following. Item 1, Selectmen's expense, purchase vehicle for Town Hall departments. Current vehicles are former older model police cruisers and are unreliable. Item 2, collector, purchase envelopes, billings, payments, and correspondence. Item 3, information technology, computer upgrade of firewall, antivirus, and spam filters, and purchase of five iPads for the Board of Selectmen. Item 4, Town clerk salaries. Item 5, lease expense, purchase new radios. Item 6, highway vehicle repairs. Item 7, townwide fuel, replace gas pump system to bring into compliance with Vapor Recovery Act. Item 8, veterans expense mileage. Item 9, library expense, no removal.
Thank you. Now, what we'll do on this, this is a short preview of the budget for the annual town meeting. I'm going to list off each item one by one and I'm going to pause. If anybody would like to hold that item, please just shout out "hold" and then we'll return to it later on. If nobody holds, I will consider it to be accepted and then we'll vote on all of them at the end. So, item 1, accepted. Item 2, accepted. Item 3, accepted. Item 4, accepted. Item 5, accepted. Item 6, accepted. Item 7, accepted. Item 8, accepted. Item 9, accepted. So, is there any discussion on the entire article? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 2 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article 2 is adopted. Article 3, Mr. Scott.
I move the town will vote to transfer $25,564 from free cash for repairs to the McQuan Elementary and Hanson Middle School.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Scott.
Yes, the explanation of that, the McQuan School need to replace a steam coil valve for the amount of $5,276. McQuan School study gym and cafeteria roof, $7,500. Middle School, a hot water circulator pump for $12,788. These funds are to reimburse the Whitman-Hanson School District for the project which has already been completed.
Any discussion on this article? Oh, Mr. Young.
I'd just like to state that these expenses are also recommended by the Indian Head and McQuan School Priority Repair Committee.
Any further discussion? Oh, Ms. Arena.
Quick question. Could we get the balance of free cash that we're spending?
Oh, thank you. Yes. Do we have the balance of free cash?
Total spending. Free cash for spending?
Just what's in the bag?
We started the meeting at $385,030.
Okay. So the free cash amount...
And the current balance is 747,525 after the vote's already taken.
Oh, after the vote's already taken. So we started the evening at $885,030 and we've already taken a few votes which has chipped away at that.
747.
747.
525.
525. Thank you. Any further discussion on Article 3? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 3 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article 3 passes. Article 4, Mr. Mitchell.
I move the town will vote to transfer $25 from free cash to be added to the stabilization.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Mitchell.
This money will be used to increase the stabilization fund. A stabilization fund is a mechanism for setting aside money either for unforeseen needs or for capital projects. Such a fund is intended to equalize the efforts of capital expenditures over time and to provide a rainy day fund. The dollar amount appropriated under this article will increase the stabilization fund to $1,098,000, which represents approximately 5% of the operating budget. The town's target has been to maintain close to 5%, which is the industry standard minimum amount for stabilization funds as recommended by our auditors and will help to maintain a positive bond rating for future borrowing purposes. Estimated $25,000. This requires a two-thirds vote.
Any discussion on Article 4? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 4 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry. One moment. My mistake. This requires a two-thirds vote. So, all those in favor of Article 4 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it by a two-thirds vote. Article 5, Mr. Young.
Move that the town vote to transfer us $10,000 from free cash to be added to the regional schools capital stabilization fund as established by the October 2014 special town meeting.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Young.
This stabilization fund sets aside funds for the exclusive use of paying for capital improvements to the Hanson School Buildings and the Whitman-Hanson Regional High School. We're putting $10,000 aside at this town meeting for that purpose.
Any discussion on Article 5? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 5 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article 5 is adopted. Article 6, Mr. Ellis.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I move the town vote to transfer $3,000 from free cash for the proposed scanning planning board subdivision plans, approval not required plans, ASBIL plans, easement and descriptions into the electronic format.
Second. Second. And Mr. Ellis?
Let's see. These funds will be used to cover the expenses incurred for scanning plans and other municipal documents into the electronic format. Estimated amount is $3,000. This is an ongoing project. We did it last year. We did subdivision plans, mostly completed at this time. Roadway layouts, roadway easement descriptions we need to do, and Form A plans by street name. These documents are scanned into a PDF format and placed on the Town Hall Computer Network.
Thank you. Any other discussion on Article 6? One moment, if you could come to the microphone. It's very hard for people to hear. And also, while we have a moment, anybody who comes to the microphone, I do my very best with names, but there's a lot of people here, so if you could please state your name and your address before you pose your question.
Yes, my name is David Pell. I'm new in the town. I live at 30 Great Cedar Drive.
Well, welcome to town.
And my question is, to the gentleman, is the printer or the device that we use, is it purchased for the $3,000 or is this the constant for somebody to send out to, to scan to the electronic platform?
Mr. Ellis?
Through you, Mr. Moderator. It is, an individual comes in and scans it for us, puts it on the format of a PDF.
Yes, sir.
So the machine is owned by the town?
Yes, it will be.
Oh, it will be?
The results is owned by the town, yes. The PDF is owned by the town.
My question is, the device that's used, do we own it from the town or do we have to pay this person to have their own machine scanned?
It's a scanning machine.
So, my question is, we're paying $3,000 on an ongoing basis. I think it would be cheaper if we bought ourselves a printer and we would save some money.
Donnie, we have a printer at the Town Hall.
Mr. McGann, please.
We have a printer at the Town Hall that does scanning, but I'm not sure if it's able to scan the large documents. Is that true or not?
No, I doubt it.
That's what I'm asking, but I'm not sure.
Mr. Ellis?
Through you, Mr. Moderator. Could I have Laurie answer that question?
Sure. I wasn't expecting a lengthy debate on this article, but please.
Hi. We send it out to a printing agency because the plans are so large, we don't have the capability to do it in-house.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Norton?
Just for information, the town does in fact own a scanner that will scan something as large as a plan. The Hanson Historical Society worked with the CTA funds and produced one. It's housed at the library. It has cameras. It can handle plans 36 inches easily and reduce it into whatever digital format they want to stick into the computer. So if they walk over to the library, they can save $3,000 bucks.
Once again, welcome to town.
He just saved the town $3,000, right?
And hopefully, Mr. Ellis will take that under consideration. But any other discussion for Article 6? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 6 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
Nay.
All right. Well, we have our first vote of the night. Not even on the Article 6 I was anticipating. Now, you were given two cards when you came in, a yellow card and a blue card. There was some miscommunication at the very beginning of checking people in. The yellow card is for the special town meeting, which is what we're doing right now. Keep the blue one in your pocket for later on. It'll be needed. But all those in favor of Article 6, please signify by raising your yellow card and keep it up until the tellers have had a chance to count your vote.
If we had a machine that does it, why are we paying someone to do it? I don't think they knew. I didn't know there was a machine. I had no idea. We already voted.
18. 55.
35.
35. Thank you. Ms. Maria.
31.
31. All those who are opposed, please raise your card at this time.
61.
And while the final counts are taking place, I see there's a bunch of voters in the visitors' section. Some, I'm sorry to make you move, but it becomes confusing for the tellers. If you could please move out of the visitors' section, it'll just make things easier for us. Thank you very much.
75.
By a vote of 84 to 172, Article 6 is not adopted. Article 7, Mr. Hanlon.
Through you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to transfer $10,000 from free cash for the grading and maintaining of private ways under the direction of the Highlands Event.
Second. Second. Mr. Hanlon.
These funds are used to purchase materials and supplies and to rent equipment, hire contract for the grading of the private ways which the town maintains.
Any further discussion on Article 7? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 7 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article 7 is adopted. Article 8, Mr. Howard.
I move that the town will vote to transfer $10,000 from Water Circles to be added to the funds appropriated under Article 16 of the May 4, 2015 special town meeting to continue rehabilitation of the work at the Crystal Spring well site.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Hanlon.
The money will be used to continue rehabbing the wells at Crystal Springs. Well number four still needs to be cleaned with the possibility of purchasing a new pump and the search control valve and the pump house also needs to be replaced. It is critical we get this work completed so the water tank goes back online.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 8 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, signify by saying nay. The ayes have it. Article 8 is adopted. Article 9, Mr. Howard.
I move the town vote to transfer $100,000 from Water Circles to pay for water purchase from the city of Brockton.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Howard.
The county will pay for a portion of the bill owed to the city of Brockton for using their water for approximately two months while the water tank on High Street was being rehabilitated. The water department will need to put another article on town floor in October to pay the
Any discussion on Article 9? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 9 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article 9 is adopted.
Sean, the water tank itself on High Street right now, the whole inside of it has been done and they were supposed to start the outside this week, so it's moving right along very fast and hopefully it'll be done sooner than expected.
Thank you very much. Article 10, Mr. Mitchell.
I move the town will vote to accept the donation of land located on Hancock Street known as Assessors Map 2 Lot 764 for general municipal purposes.
I'll second.
Thank you. Second. Mr. Mitchell.
Hanson resident Don Ellis has offered to donate the lot, which is contiguous to a town-owned parcel. The parcels are in close proximity to the Hancock Street Ball Field known as Sergeant James Francis Red Harrington Park.
Any discussion on this? Mr. Ellis?
I'd just like to explain the reason for the gift of this land, that these lots are located adjacent to the Hancock Street Ball Field in a way of making a terrific neighborhood playground for Hanson's children. I met with the Community Preservation Committee and they agreed that this would be a welcome addition to the Hancock Street area. The committee agreed to help with the funding of farther playground. I also spoke with some of the residents in the area who have agreed to help in any way they can. The additional land was originally proposed to the Selectmen and the CPC Committee and was an unanimous approval but overlooked for the article. I hope to vote for this article.
Thank you. Any further...Ms. Kim.
You have just clarification. We are in support generally of the project, but the Community Preservation hasn't proposed any expenditure yet on this until it goes a little bit further in the planning stages. So we're just sort of, you know, in the preliminary stages of discussing it with Mr. Ellis, but conceptually, we are in support of it. I just wanted to clarify that.
And that's on behalf of Community Preservation?
That's correct.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Mr. Weeks.
Hi, Joe Weeks, 83 Hancock Street. This is a piece of land that's about 100 yards from my house. Just speaking with a bunch of the residents, we all support this and think it's a great idea, so thank you, Mr. Ellis, for doing that. And I urge everyone to support this article as well. Thank you.
Terrific. Any further? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 10 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Mr. Ellis, thank you very much. Absolutely. Article 11, Mr. McGann.
I move the town will vote to amend the wage and personnel bylaws, Article 2-12, classification and compensation by deleting sections 11A through 11E in its entirety and inserting the new sections 11A through 11E as printed in the warrant.
Second. Second. Mr. McGann.
And we expanded the explanation just for you, Sean.
Thank you.
This is an annual housekeeping article. The amounts listed in the matrix are set as ranges and do not fund the positions. Funding for the positions is voted during the budget, which is Article 5 of the annual town meeting. The changes to the compensation plan are highlighted and include an adjustment to the range for the town plan and conservation agent. A 2% increase will exceed the current 70,000 threshold for the position. The new salary will be $70,564. The $75,000 threshold will limit the necessity for repeated annual adjustments. The creation of the new position for the Recreation Director, which will be 30 to 40 hours per week, the salary for the position will be paid from the recreational expense enterprise fund. Student police officer position has been added to the matrix as they are not included in the Police Union Collective bargaining agreement until they have completed the police academy.
Thank you. Any further discussion on Article 11? Ms. Kim.
Hi, Laura Kim at 83 Bay State Circle. I'm not really sure who to address this to, but I have a question of the Recreation Director position, and perhaps this will be gotten into in the town meeting warrant, I'm not sure. But I'm just wondering if somebody could...I'm generally in favor of this, I think, but I just want to make sure, will we still have an administrative person there? What will the responsibilities of the director be versus an administrative person? And I think I heard you say that essentially Recreation was going to fund this position from their account, so I'm not sure who can answer those questions.
And actually, it's a bit out of scope for this article. There will be further articles, though, that all of those questions will be on point.
Then I'll get up and ask them then. Thank you.
Any further discussions? Yes, sir.
David Pell again, 30 Great Cedar Drive. Excuse me. I see positions here for the town, but I don't see any positions for us representing the Whitman School District as far as the IT department. And I think we could probably have someone benefit our, excuse me, our side of the district to help coordinate and to see what's beneficial to the students from the town of Hanson. And I don't see that in here.
You won't. Well, if I may, we aren't setting the ranges for the school district. If I'm incorrect in any way, Mr. Hayes, please correct me, but we're not setting the ranges for the school district. That's done by a different entity altogether. We're just doing it for the town officers that we control. If that's correct. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 11 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article 11 is adopted. Article 12, Mr. Scott.
I move the town will vote to amend the wage and personnel bylaws, Article 2-12, classification and compensation, Section 7A, by deleting the second sentence and inserting in its place the following. Annual increases are not automatic but based on evaluation of employees' ability and work performance. Employees in Section 11A and Section 11B shall be evaluated by the town administrator. Employees in 11C, 11D, and 11E shall be evaluated by the relevant department head and reviewed by the town administrator.
Do we have a second? Mr. Scott.
This revision clarifies the evaluation process for employees as it relates to salary increases. This new language replaces verbiage which required the town administrator to conduct evaluations on all the wage and personnel employees listed in the classification and compensation matrix, which is printed in the previous article, Article 11. The new language only requires the town administrator to evaluate Section 11A, professional positions, and Section 11B, administrative and/or full-time employees. Remaining positions will be evaluated by department head with a review by the town administrator.
Any discussion on Article 12? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 12 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article 12 is adopted. So we will now adjourn the special town meeting and enter into the annual town meeting. Article 1, Mr. Howard.
I move the town vote to hear any reports of the various town office.
One moment. Mr. Howard, could you repeat that, please?
I move the town vote to hear any reports of the various town offices, committees, and special committees.
I'll second.
The reports voted on are those published in the 2015 town report.
And just as a point of information, such a large crowd came tonight that we ran out of town reports. So if you are interested in getting a copy of that, I am told by our town administrator and the deputy town administrator that you can get one at town hall at any time of your choosing. Just please show up. So, any discussion on Article 1? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 1 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, Article 1 is adopted. Article 2, Mr. McGann.
Article 2, I move the town vote to authorize the treasurer-collector to enter into compensating balance agreements during fiscal 2017 as permitted by Mass General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53F.
Do we have a second? Mr. McGann.
Every year this article is voted on, it simply allows the treasurer-collector to maintain accounts using credits instead of money to pay for banking charges.
Any further discussion on Article 2? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 2 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, Article 2 is adopted. Article 3, Mr. Young.
I move that the town vote to transfer $20,000 from overlay surplus for the treasurer slash collector's tax title account.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Young.
This money will be used to cover the cost incurred for filing and advertising properties and delinquent taxes and alter to pay any legal fees resulting from this process.
Any discussion on this article? Yes, sir. Any money? Nope. Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 3 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, Article 3 is adopted. Article 4, Mr. Scott.
I move the town vote to fix the salary and compensation of all paid elected officers and committees of the town as printed in the warrant.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Scott.
The town clerk, fiscal year 16 is $64,595. For fiscal year 17, 2017, $65,887. That'd be for the town clerk. The tree warden is set at $2,0936 for fiscal years 2016 and $2,995 for fiscal year 17. This article sets...
One moment, Mr. Scott, I think I jumped the gun there, but do we have a second at this point?
Second.
Okay, good. I thought the, I interrupted Mr. Scott. Just wanted to make sure. Mr. Scott.
This article sets the salary limits for the elected officials that out of Article 5, and Article 5 funds those salaries.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 4 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article 4 is adopted. And here the fun begins. Article 5. Mr. Mitchell.
I move the town vote to determine what sums of money the town will raise and appropriate by taxation, transfer from free cash, transfer from town ambulance funds, water department revenue, water surplus, Title V special revenue fund, MWPAT loan repayment, receipt reserve for appropriation, conservation notice of intent fund, overlay surplus, fund balance reserved for reduction of future excluded debt, and the election fund, Chapter 503, Acts of 1983, to defray charges and expenses of the town, including debt and interest, and provide for a reserve fund for fiscal 2017.
Do we have a second?
Second.
This article refers to fiscal year 2017 annual budget lines.
All right. So, just as we did with the previous article, what I'm going to do is I'm going to read off line by line. I'm going to pause, and if you would like to hold it for discussion, debate, questions, please yell out "hold" and then we'll return to it at the end. If no one holds, I'm going to say "adopted." So, we will begin. Line 1. Hold, held. Line 2. Line 3. Adopted. Line 4. Adopted. Line 5. Adopted. Line 6. Adopted. Line 7. Adopted. Line 8. Adopted. Line 9. I forgot to tell you. I just realized, I forgot. For those of you who have never been here before, we are voting, in the end, we're voting on the finance committee recommendation in the far-right column. So, I will continue. Article 10. Adopted. Article 11. Adopted. Article 12. Adopted. Article 13. Article 14. Adopted. Article 15. Adopted. Article 16. Article 17. Article 18. Adopted. Article 19. Adopted. Article 20. Adopted. Article 21. Adopted. Article 22. Adopted. Article 23. Adopted. Article 24. Adopted. Article 25. Article 26. Adopted. Article 27. Adopted. Article 28. Article 29. Let you all take a look at that first. Article 29. Adopted. Article 30. Article 31, I'm sorry, line 31. Line 32. Line 33. Line 34. Adopted. Line 35. Adopted. Line 36. Adopted. Line 37. Adopted. Line 38. Adopted. Line 39. Adopted. Line 40. Adopted. Line 41. Line 42. Adopted. Line 43. Adopted. Line 44. Adopted. Line 45. Adopted. Line 46. Adopted. Line 47. Adopted. Line 48. Adopted. Line 49. Adopted. Line 50. Adopted. Line 51. Adopted. Line 52. Hold. Line 52 is held. Line 53. Hold. Line 53 is held. Line 54. Line 55. Oh, I'm sorry. Line 54 adopted. Line 55. Adopted. Line 56. Adopted. Line 57. Adopted. Line 58. Adopted. Line 59. Adopted. Line 60. Line 61. Line 61 is held. Line 62. Adopted. Line 63. Adopted. Line 64. Adopted. Line 65. Adopted. Line 66. Line 67. Adopted. Line 68. Line 69. Adopted. Line 70. Adopted. Line 71. Adopted. Line 72. Adopted. Line 73. Adopted. Line 74. Adopted. Line 75. Adopted. Line 76. Adopted. Line 77. Line 78. Adopted. Line 79. Line 80. Adopted. Line 81. Adopted. Line 82. Adopted. Line 83. Adopted. Line 84. Adopted. Line 85. Adopted. Line 86. Adopted. Line 87. Adopted. Line 88. Adopted. Line 89. So now we'll go back in the order in which lines were held. Pardon me? Oh! I'm missing my pages. Yeah, I'm very sorry, I was missing a couple. We're now at the water department, line 90. Adopted. Line 91. Adopted. Line 92. Adopted. Line 93. Adopted. All right, so now we'll go back in the order in which lines were held. We had a hold on line 1. If you could please state your name and your address when you come to the microphone, thank you very much.
Hi, Robin Sparta-Curn, 23 Monroe Street. I actually, I just wanted to break down for line 1, the salaries for the new administrator, and that includes, this is inclusive of Mary's salary too?
Any of the selectmen like to take this?
Both.
Mr. Watch, that?
Selectment executive assistant, salary is $52,550. And I believe the town administrator's salary is about $120,000. That gets you close. I think it's the 2% increase for Mary that we were missing.
Okay, so...
It's basically two people.
Okay, and so we're raising, for our new town administrator, he's coming right off with the raise? That's what you're saying? The $10,000 extra, or that's all I'm asking?
The board of selectmen negotiated that contract. This is what the salary was that we were presenting.
Mr. Young.
Yeah, the difference between the salary was to cover the hiring of our new town administrator.
Okay, what is the exact amount of his salary?
Exact amount of the town administrator's salary is $115,000.
Okay.
It's the first year of a three-year contract.
Okay, and what was the previous administrator's? I'm just wondering.
When the last town administrator left, his salary at the time that he left was $110,000.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any further discussion on line 1? Seeing none, line 1 is adopted. The next held line is line 52.
Brienne Larue, 115 Leon Court, oh, loud anyway. I just have a couple of questions about the ACO. So, we have two ACO positions, a 19-hour position and a 10-hour position. One is for, and they're for three towns, correct? For Abington, Whitman, and Hanson.
Town administrator position, question, yeah.
Okay, so...
Yeah, and I do apologize. Mr. McHugh hasn't officially begun his job at this point, so he's brand spanking new. Usually the town administrator would have these answers off the top of their head, but we'll muddle through them.
Okay, so they, there's absolutely not enough hours at all for the ACO position. They are told, you know, they have to shut their phones off, and I'm just wondering how we would be able to get them, maybe if we, all three towns split three hours a week, that would bring it up to almost 40 hours, but it would be like 39 hours. How would we get it till we get a lot, like $5,000 more to, that would just be three hours more a week for Hanson's portion of...
If I was to guess, you'd probably have to look at the regionalization contract and adjust it there. But again, I'm totally speculating.
Okay, okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments on line 52? Seeing, oh, yes.
Sean, I can, I'm looking at the details, and this might be helpful.
Mr. McGann.
Abington's percentage is 38%. Whitman is 34, and Hanson's 28%. So obviously you would have to take the difference of what you're asking to add and break it up by that percentage. Makes sense?
You'd have to get the other towns to agree to it.
Yeah, you'd have to get the other towns to agree with us.
And that'll be the role of the new town administrator?
Right.
You're already getting jobs. That's great. Any other questions or comments on line 52? Seeing none, line 52 is adopted. Line 53 was held. Any questions or comments? Yes, ma'am.
Can I just get an explanation for what Robin Sparta-Curn, 23 Monroe Street, just what is the $20,000 for?
That's our share of the regionalization contract for the animal control officer. That's split between the three towns. So we don't have a salary position anymore, we share the expense. So literally you're moving one down.
Okay, that's what I was wondering. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, line 53 is adopted. The next held line was line 61. Any questions or comments on that? Seeing none, Article 61 is adopted. And that was the last held line. So, we have a motion to adopt the budget as printed in the warrant as recommended by the finance committee?
Seconded.
Seconded? Well, it was already seconded, but thank you, Mr. O'Sullivan. So all those in favor of adopting Article 5 as recommended by the finance committee and printed in the warrant, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? The ayes have it. And I do believe it was unanimous. That is unbelievable. You know, and I just want to, just take a moment, you know, it almost seemed too easy to get through that article compared to some previous years, and it's, it might seem easy, but it's not. It took a lot of effort by the finance committee and the board of selectmen. Okay, very good. So, I'll finish up my sober case. It took a lot of effort by the board of selectmen and the finance committee with the help of all the town departments, the school board. A lot of work went into this, and, you know, it's really a testament to their hard work that we were able to do this this smoothly tonight. So, just as a follow-up, town council asked me to say that the total for Article 5 spending will be $21,352,037.
We should say thanks to Richard LaCamera as well.
Oh, and a special thanks to Richard LaCamera, who is the interim town administrator. He was not able to be here tonight, but he served the town very well for the past year.
I think yes. Twenty-two more.
Not what I have? Goodness gracious. I'm missing them, I'm being thrown curveballs left and right here. I'm missing them, being thrown curveballs left and right here. Now I'm told that the total amount of spending, and this is the real number, twenty-two million, six hundred and twenty-one thousand, twenty-four dollars. Thank you. All righty, we will move on now. Article Six. Now, before we get going with Article Six, if you were to give me the power to do so, I could probably summarize both sides in about three minutes. We're all very passionate about the issue. Both sides have very good reasons. Now, just, all comments should come through me as the moderator, and please, 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 avoid any personal attacks, there is no need for it whatsoever. And another point is that this is not to see if it's going to be on the ballot. When you go to the ballot, this will be on. This is simply to authorize the spending of that money should that question pass. Now, the other thing that I want to, I wanted to do, the, in a moment, Mr. Young is going to make a motion and do an explanation. The explanation is going to break out roughly what the money may be spent on. I say may be spent on, that's the school board's decision, the school committee. We are not going to debate individual items because we don't have control over it. We either give them the money or we don't give them the money. And once that happens, they will decide, and they are an excellent school board, and their meetings are open, and you can voice your opinions to them directly, and I'm sure Mr. Hayes would be pleased to see you come to a school committee meeting at any time. We won't be debating the individual merits of each of these pieces, but only whether or not we should authorize the spending should the question pass at the election. So with that, Mr. Young, Article Six.
Before I move Article Six, I'd just like to say something. The motion on Article Six is to appropriate the funds.
Yes.
Okay? It's not to authorize the spending of the money that may be voted at the ballot question, it's to appropriate the funds.
I think you said what I said very succinctly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Young.
I move that the town vote to determine whether the town will appropriate and raise by taxation or transfer from other available funds the additional sum of one million, two hundred and forty-one thousand, one hundred and forty-one dollars for paying the town's assessed share of the fiscal two thousand seventeen operating budget of the Whitman-Hanson Regional School District, provided however, that the amounts raised and appropriated hereunder shall be expressly contingent upon the approval by the voters at an election of the so-called Proposition Two and a Half override question in accordance with the provisions of Chapter Fifty-Nine, Section Twenty-One C.G. of the General Laws.
Seconded. Mr. Young.
The above will appropriate funds for the following additional budget items, which were part of the fiscal two thousand seventeen Whitman-Hanson Regional School Budget, which was approved and certified by a ten-zero vote of the Regional School Committee. Instructional staff, eight positions. Library, five positions. Two social workers, two reading specialists, two math specialists, two foreign language instructors, one foreign language program coordinator, one art teacher, one music teacher, one wellness instructor, one fine arts instructor, one music director, and full-time, no-cost kindergarten program, professional development improvements, safety and security resources, one safety and security position, three duty aides, and one data specialist for the fiscal year beginning July one, two thousand sixteen. This article also requires voter approval of a ballot question at the May twenty-one, two thousand sixteen annual town election. If so approved, the funds will be added to the Whitman-Hanson Regional School Budget.
So, we have a motion, and a second, and an explanation. Is there any discussion on Article Six? Seeing none? Wow, this is great. Come on back to the next meeting, this is awesome. Article Six, seeing no discussion. All those in favor of Article Six, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay?
Nay.
The ayes have it. Article Six is adopted. Article Seven.
Mr. Martin.
Oh, Mr. O'Sullivan, please.
Joe O'Sullivan, six twenty-five West Washington Street. I voted on the prevailing side. I wish to reconsider the last motion in the hopes that it does not prevail.
I have a second.
Is there, now, I had a discussion, a lengthy discussion with town council about this. It is not our town's tradition to reconsider motions short of a compelling reason. Usually when we go back and reconsider something, which by the bylaws requires a two-thirds vote, it's because we've made a mistake in wording, or a number, or some good reason to go back and consider it. We have never done it to close out an issue, and I do not want to set that precedent. So is there a compelling reason other than you just want no monkey business later on?
I want no monkey business later on, but I will cheerfully withdraw my motion.
Thank you very much. Article Seven, Mr. Blouse.
I move the town vote to amend Article Seven as follows.
Oh, pardon me. It's, what I understand, it's not an amendment, it's, you're moving Article Seven.
I'm moving Article Seven.
Thank you.
Okay. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the following sums of money to operate the Recreation Department during fiscal year two thousand seventeen under provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter Forty-four, Section Fifty-three, F. One-half.
So we have a second. Mr. Blouse.
Estimated revenues, program receipts, fees, two hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Retained earnings, eight thousand dollars. From taxation, twenty-eight thousand, one hundred and eighty-four dollars. A total budget revenue of three thousand, uh, three hundred, six thousand, one hundred and eighty-four dollars. Estimated expenses, salaries would be one hundred and thirty-two thousand, from tax, uh, I'm sorry, the amount would be one fifty-nine, one eighty-four. The funding source would be program revenue, one hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars, and taxation, nineteen thousand, one eighty-four. Expenses would be one hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars. Indirect costs, nine thousand dollars. And retained earnings of eight thousand dollars.
So any questions or comments? Mr. Watchdade, could you just explain what happened?
So over the past week, I lost, I exchanged a couple of emails. We went through the budget, and basically, we had to amend the article as it was presented. Basically, all we did was reduce fifteen thousand dollars from the operating expenses. If you look at their year-to-date totals, they were going to be a little bit shy, so we just took the fifteen thousand dollars off. But by doing that, it shifted all the other items. So, I apologize to the rest of the department for the late amendment.
I knew that wasn't going to be pretty.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article Seven, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? The ayes have it, Article Seven is adopted.
I move the town vote to raise and appropriate the following sums of money to operate the transfer station during fiscal year two thousand seventeen under provision of Mass General Law, Chapter Forty-four, Section Fifty-three, F. One-half.
Seconded. Mr. Amato.
Program receipts of two hundred and twenty thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. Taxation, one hundred and thousand, five hundred and fifty-three dollars. Retained earnings, twenty-five thousand. The total budget revenue is three hundred and forty-six thousand, three hundred and three. These figures are different as printed in the book. These have been amended. Funding source, salaries, the total cost of operating the transfer station, three hundred and forty-six thousand, a portion of salaries, ninety-one thousand, seventy-seven. Expenses, three hundred and two thousand, seventy-six, will come from general taxation. The balance of expenses, two hundred and twenty-seven, two hundred and twenty-five, seven hundred and fifty thousand. Two hundred and twenty-five thousand, seventy-five, will be repaid through the enterprise fund.
Any questions or comments on Article Eight? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article Eight, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? The ayes have it. Article Eight is adopted. Article Nine, Ms. Kement.
I move the town vote to appropriate a reserve from fiscal year two thousand seventeen Community Preservation Fund estimated annual revenues and the amounts recommended by the Community Preservation Committee for the committee administrative expenses, community preservation projects, and other expenses in fiscal year two thousand seventeen, with each item to be considered a separate appropriation.
Seconded. Ms. Kement.
The amounts are listed there, but by way of explanation, the Community Preservation Act requires that certain amounts be set in certain buckets or accounts, if you will, and this basically lays that out so that we're in compliance with the Community Preservation Act.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article Nine, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? The ayes have it, Article Nine is adopted. Article Ten, Mr. Norton.
I move the town adopt the capital improvement program as presented by the capital improvement committee and take any other actions there too. It's the matrix.
Do we have a second? Mr. Norton.
It's the matrix that you received in the pink form tonight. It's the five-year capital budget plan.
Any discussion on the capital improvement plan? Give everybody just a moment. For most of you, it's pink, for some of you, it may be green, all depending on when you came in, so.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Big crowd, big crowd.
I got the pink edition.
Any questions or comments on Article Ten? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article Ten, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay? The ayes have it, Article Ten is adopted. Article Eleven, Mr. Norton.
I move the town vote to appropriate transfer from available funds, six hundred eighty-seven thousand, eight hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars to various departments for capital accounting for the following items, and those items will be taken up individually after the initial approval.
Seconded. Mr. Norton.
As listed, each of the lines has a different rationale. We'll go over those line by line.
That's correct. So what, again, I'll go through the list. I'll pause. If you want to hold, shout out "hold," and then we'll come back to it. Line one. Adopted. Line two. Adopted. Line three. Adopted. Line four. Adopted. Line five. Adopted. Line six. Hold. Mr. Norton holds. Line seven. Adopted. Line eight. Line eight is held. So the first held line was Mr. Norton on line six.
Okay, I just held because the selectmen had held, I anticipated we would have a slightly refined number on that at this meeting. If that's not the case, I'll lay for three, three-twenty-two stand.
Are there any revisions from the selectmen?
Right now, we're going to stay with the three-twenty-two, Mr. Norton.
Okay.
But we do have some numbers that we received from Gail, but we're also looking to see what we can get for a very rock-bottom type of price with just getting the roof fixed.
Okay.
The problem that we have is that we have a statement of interest going out for a solution to the, to the possible, to the replacement of the McQuon School, and we want to make sure that, we simply just don't know, folks. We got, we could be at that school for five, ten, fifteen, twenty-five years, depending on if MSBA approves or not, if the town goes to vote or not. So right now, the amount I know is three hundred and twenty-two thousand. I can tell you for certain that the Gail estimate came in for just the rubber roofing, for lack of a better word, they call it EPDM roof system, at two hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars. But much of that included also replacing like gutters and, and other items that might be reconsidered, if you will.
That's fine, I was reacting to your hold.
Yep.
As printed in the warrant.
So at this point, we're just going to keep to the three-twenty-two.
Fine, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments on line six? When the, the clerk informs me that when the motion was read, it was not stated that there would, these funds would be taken from free cash.
Okay, I used the word available cash.
But that is part of the motion.
Okay, I used the word available funds.
That's right. But it is coming from free cash, except for recreation, which I believe is retained earnings. Mr. Blouse, you held line eight.
Yes, I'm just a little bit confused. This is the, the first time I've seen that. I knew we were up for capital improvement funds, and I'm just trying to understand why we're here when it shows that we're paying for it from our own funds as opposed from to, from the capital improvement or free cash. It doesn't look like we've been, we're getting funds from the town to do this, it looks like it's just coming out from our accounts, and I'm wondering why we're on the capital improvement plan for that.
Mr. Norton.
Actually, I'll refer that to the selectmen because that was Mr. LaCamera's suggestion, and he's not here to speak to it. He had said, and I assumed he had made an agreement with them, that that would be handed out of the retained earnings in the enterprise fund. Perhaps someone on the selectmen can enlighten me?
At this point in time, all I can tell you is that at the...
Mr. McGinn.
At the meeting review that we had last week, it said retained earnings. That was my understanding. That's all I can say to you. You're expecting it out of free cash?
Well, I had not read this, so I'm not even sure why we're on the capital improvement plan. Normally, that comes from town funds. We're the only line here that is not. When we knew, when we heard that we had been recommended by the capital improvement committee, we assumed that the capital improvement committee was recommending to, for the town to appropriate funds to do the septic systems. If it had been from retained earnings, we would have just put it into our own budget.
It has to go into the capital improvement plan regardless of where the, the funding is coming from because it qualifies as an asset under the capital improvement bylaw to be taken up by the capital improvement plan regardless of where it come from, whether it came from overlay reserve, whether it came from your fund, from free cash, or any other fund. That's why, that's why it's here.
Okay, thank you for the explanation.
Just by way of comparison, the water department projects are all on the capital improvement plan, but they're all funded by the water department itself.
Correct. Any further questions or comments? Ms. Arena?
I wasn't objecting to that, he was just objecting to, he was wondering why.
I just thought enterprise funds needed a two-thirds vote to take money out of the enterprise fund, so same for recreation? If you're using enterprise...
I'm advised, no.
No?
No.
I thought you were questioning whether it should come from free cash. Sorry, Dave.
Any other questions or comments? So, I will consider line six and eight adopted as printed in the warrant. All those in favor of Article Eleven as printed in the warrant, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay?
Nay.
The ayes have it, Article Eleven is adopted. Article Twelve. Mr. Norton.
I'll defer to Mr. Hayes for Article Twelve.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes.
I move the town vote to raise and appropriate and transfer from available funds, ninety-nine thousand, seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars to capital accounts for the following, Whitman-Hanson Regional High School.
Seconded. Mr. Hayes.
Line one is a portion of the Whitman-Hanson Regional Agreement to repair the tennis courts, six hundred, I mean, sixty-eight thousand, one hundred and seventy-eight dollars. Also, over the winter, the... Also, over the winter, the front walkways in front of the office and in front of the gym have heaved, so we have to replace those, $18,594. Both towns, by the way, are getting involved with doing that to try to save money to get that done. As if you came in the Hanson Middle School here today, you would see that we replaced a bunch that heaved out here that were brand-new, and thanks to the town of Hanson, we saved $3,000 for them coming forward, so I'd like to thank them. Everybody working together and having that attitude that's saving the town some money, so thank you to the highway department. And last but not least, the chairlift to the bleachers is broken, and it has to be ADA accessible, so it needs to be replaced, and that cost us $12,966 for a total of $99,738.
So, once again, if you have a hold, please let me know. Line one. Line two. Oh, line one is adopted. Line two. Adopted. Line three. Adopted. Any questions or comments on Article twelve? Oh, I heard a question. Yes, please.
Hi, my name is Emma McReynolds, and I'm 15 West Washington Street. I wondered what surface they were going to redo the tennis courts with?
I was hoping grasp, and I don't think that's the case.
No. Are you going to do it?
I need the slower game.
Yeah, like an old weather surface, where they've been cracked before?
Mr. Hayes.
We have Ernie Sandlin here, who's the maintenance, judge of the maintenance department in the whole district, and he can probably answer that better than I can. Mr. Moderator.
Be no objection, please, if you can speak.
Ernest Sandlin, Facility Manager, Whitman-Hanson Regional. To answer your question, it'll be an asphalt base, three inches of asphalt with three coats of the color on top of that.
Okay, and how long is usually the life of that as opposed to an old surface?
The courts that are underneath the existing asphalt that's there are from the '70s. What happened in 2009, 2005, when they redid the school, they resurfaced the four courts that were there and put in one brand-new one. Now, the one that's brand-new, it's been 10 years, there's no cracks in that whatsoever, but the old four courts that they resurfaced back in 2005 have cracks everywhere. So, the length of time, I would imagine it's at least 15 to 20 years. We'll get out of that.
Oh, great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other questions or concerns?
I have a question.
Mr. Palygra.
Joe Palygra, 72 Lakeside Terrace. To Mr. Hayes, through you, to Mr. Hayes. My understanding is if Whitman votes on this also, if they don't vote on it, we don't go forward with this? Can you just clarify it?
Mr. Hayes.
Yes, that's true. Whitman's voting on the very same thing this evening, different figures, but the same exact article.
Any other questions or concerns? Line one is adopted. Line two. Adopted. Line three. Adopted. So, any further questions or commentary on Article twelve? Is printed in the warrant. Seeing none, all those in favor of Article twelve signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article twelve is adopted. Article thirteen, Mr. McGann.
I move the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to accept and enter into a contract for the expenditure of any allocated, to be allocated funds by the Commonwealth and/or County for the construction, reconstruction, and improvements of town roads. Said sum of money to be expended under the direction of the Board of Selectmen.
Second. Thank you, Mr. Howard. Mr. McGann.
This article is a requirement of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the Town of Hanson, to accept state funding, including Chapter 90 funding for accepted roadways. This article authorizes use of funds which will be 100% reimbursed for the Commonwealth, which will be 100% reimbursed by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. The budget approved each fiscal year by the legislator and governor establishes the total funding available for Chapter 90 local transportation aid for that year. These funds are then appropriated to 351 Massachusetts towns and cities.
Any questions or comments on Article thirteen? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article thirteen signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article thirteen is adopted. Article fourteen. Yes.
Tushokane 300 South Street. I move for the town to vote to appropriate from overlays surplus to the sum of $45,000 to fund the fiscal 2018-2019 interim year adjustments and the fiscal 2020 triennial recertification of the town's real estate and personal property values as required by Mass General Law, Chapter 797 of the Acts of 1979.
Second.
Mass General Law requires that valuations be recertified every three years. All building schedules, land tables, depreciation schedules, et cetera, are recalculated according to the current real estate market. New income and expense figures are also adopted based on the current commercial industrial market. The estimated cost is $45,000.
Any questions or concerns about Article fourteen? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article fourteen signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article fourteen is adopted. Article fifteen, Ms. Kement.
I move the town vote to appropriate or reserve $15,000 from the Undesignated Community Preservation Fund for the purposes of hiring a consultant to prepare a community preservation plan for the Community Preservation Committee. Basically, by way...
One moment, please. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded, Ms. Kement.
Yep, by way of an explanation, we'd like to hire a consultant and work with all of the committees that we've already been working on, but we'd like to formalize the plan and have a vision for the use of the community preservation money, and hiring this consultant would help us solidify all of the various pieces that we need to do that.
Any questions or comments on Article fifteen? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article fifteen signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article fifteen is adopted. Article sixteen, Mr. Howard.
I move the town vote to transfer $45,000 from free cash to be used to advance the McQuon Street Route 14 reconstruction project from the Project Need Form PNF stage through the Project Initiation Form PIF stage and through the Project Review Committee, PIC.
Second. Seconded, Mr. Howard.
McQuon Street Route 14 reconstruction project is ultimately anticipated to include improvements to traffic circulation and safety pedestrian and bicycle facilities and roadway flooding along McQuon Street from Liberty Street, Route 58, and Indian Head Street to the Pembroke Town Line, a distance of approximately 1.2 miles. It will also include reconstruction of school street, approximately a quarter-mile, to link pedestrian and bicycle accommodations from the existing Indian Head School, McQuon Elementary School, Hanson Public Library, and sports field with McQuon Street and its abutting neighborhoods. Oh, work will begin with Phase One, concept development, funding assistance. In order to advance the project from the Project Need Form PNF stage through the Project Initiation Form PIF stage and through the Project Review Committee, these early stages for future state transportation improvement programs, STIP projects, include collecting data, performing preliminary evaluations, and soliciting public input to further define the project. Assistance will also be provided when filling out the PIF itself for submission to Mass DOT as well as meeting with the public and representatives of Old Colony Planning Council and Massachusetts Department of Transportation and Mass DOT. The anticipated cost of the funding assistance phase is $45,000.
Any questions or comments on Article sixteen? Yes, in the back, if you could please come to the microphone, it's very hard to hear from there.
RJ Corrier, 30 East Washington Street, but I know people would live on McQuon. I just wanted to know what the total cost of engineering is.
Approximately $300,000, well, it'll be $345,000. This is the first stage of it. Pembroke has been on the TIP program now for the past, I think it was six years, and Pembroke is getting the money now through the state and the federal government to redo from the Hanson Town Line all the way to Route 53, which I think the people of, when you drive on Route 14 now, the construction has started this year. I've been working on this project for six years, and I finally got to the point, the Town of Hanson has to pay the engineering and design of the project, but the total project at the end will cost roughly the Town of Hanson $300,000. So, the town's going to get a new road from Indian Head Street to Route 5, Pembroke Town Line on McQuon Street with two sidewalks, curving, a bicycle path, and also school streets included. So, for the price of $345,000 total over the six-year period, this construction won't start probably for five or six years, but it'll cost the town only $345,000 to do a $3 million job.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or concerns? Nice job, Bill.
Nice job.
Well, I just said good job.
Good job.
Did most of the work reading. All those in favor of Article sixteen, please, oh, I'm sorry, yes, ma'am.
Deborah Swanson, 520 McQuon Street. First I've heard of this. So, it's a $300,000-plus to the town for engineering for 1.2 miles of road with a bike path that's going to go from the library to Pembroke. Can you tell me what the impact on people living on McQuon Street is going to be? If it's going to look like Route 58 or Route 106, where we have nine feet going to people's yards, we've got lakes, we've got ponds along there, what is the impact of these sidewalks and the widening of the road? It's a short road that commuters use, and they go fast enough now. We've already had one death on that side of the road. So, if you're going to expand this road, it's going to become like a little highway in a very small section of road. Is it worth it? Thank you.
Mr. Howard.
Well, on this path of the, the road has never been touched since I know of, since I've lived in town, and I've been here since 1948. And for something of this nature, also, the state mandates now that there's no water supposed to be running off into any pond, street, river, brook, or so forth. So, also included is the drainage or the filter-type system that's going to be installed on McQuon Street so that the water from McQuon Street will not, will go through a filter-type system before it goes into McQuon Pond. Also, over the hill, as you're going towards Pembroke, on the left side, the Oldham Pond also receives drainage water from McQuon Street. So, it's also going to include a filter-type system from McQuon Street also going into Oldham Pond. So, I don't know when the state's going to mandate that we're going to have to do this to all our ponds that we have in the town, but this is just one process that this price of the drainage system is going to be included into the rebuilding of the road. And there's also going to be hearings on McQuon Street. This isn't just done because we want it to do. It's going to be hearings set up so that all the residents on McQuon Street can come to the hearings and find out definitely what's going to happen.
Any other questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article sixteen signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
No.
The ayes have it. Article sixteen is adopted. Article seventeen, Mr. Howard.
I move the town to vote to transfer $500,000 from water surplus to be added to the funds appropriated under Article 23 of the May 4, 2015 Annual Town Meeting for additional water exploration.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded, Mr. Howard.
The Water Department is continuing to expend availability funding on additional water supply. Currently, the town only has one well site, which is Crystal Wells off of Main Street and corner Franklin Street. Several locations are being evaluated, which may require site clearing, excess improvements, test drilling, engineering coordination with regulators, and permitting. A stepwise approach would be implemented and evaluated by the Water Commission to rule out any infeasible areas. I'd also like to make a point. All our wells right now are on the Taunton Watershed down in the corner of Main and Franklin Street. We have nothing in the North River Watershed. This was brought up so that we're going to try to split up the water sources in Hanson so that maybe we can get 50% from the North River Watershed and sort of relieve the pressure on the wells that we are now using. There's some certain points last summer that, when the water was being run and our tank was being used, there was a point that, a few times, that Mr. Muncie had mentioned to me that the well drawdown in the aquifer in the Taunton Water District was considerably low. It was getting down near to the point where we might not have had any water. So, by this additional exploration for water to another source of the town, it'll just help everything out in the water table throughout the town.
Any questions or concerns on Article seventeen? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article seventeen signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article seventeen is adopted. Article eighteen, Mr. Howard.
I move the town to vote to transfer $75,000 from water surplus to be added to the funds appropriated under Article 16, water meters of the October 6, 1997 Special Town Meeting for the purpose of purchasing new water meters and related equipment for the Water Department.
Second.
Seconded, Mr. Howard.
The meter replacement is a continuing program designed to maintain accurate reading records.
Any questions or concerns on Article eighteen? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article eighteen signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article eighteen is adopted. Article nineteen, Mr. Howard.
I move the town vote to rescind Article 24 of the May 2, 2015 Annual Town Meeting and further vote to raise through borrowing $1.3 million for the installation of new water mains on various streets throughout the town.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Howard.
This is a housekeeping article. The project was approved at the May 2, 2015 Annual Town Meeting. However, the town's barn council requires that pursuant to the town's bylaws, the project and the amount authorized must be reflected on the town's capital improvement plan. The updated figures have been included on this year's capital improvement plan, and the proper documentation has now been completed. These funds will allow the Water Department to replace old water mains, eliminate bleeders, and dead-end streets for the better water quality.
And this requires a two-thirds vote. Any questions or comments on Article nineteen? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article nineteen signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article nineteen is adopted. Oh, I'm sorry. Article nineteen is adopted by a two-thirds vote. Thank you. Article twenty, Mr. Young.
I move that the town vote to name the intersection of Winter and Liberty Street in honor of John Ferry.
Second.
Seconded, Mr. Young.
John Ferry died on December 2, 2015 at 92 years of age. He was a highly decorated veteran who served his country in World War II and spent his life in Hanson, running his business and giving back to the town. We'd like to honor John's military service and citizenship by dedicating a memorial square in his memory.
If there be no objection, we'll hear from the veterans' agent.
John Ferry had a very historical military career. He was in the China-Burma section of conflict of World War II. He was a B-25 Ghana engineer. His flight crew flew over 75 missions without a loss of life. During these conflicts, normal flight time of flights were 25, at which time they would rotate back to the United States. Because of their exemplary track record, they stayed. Because of this here, he was awarded the Military Service Medal. Also, by the same token, too, he was also awarded the Distinguished Flying Cross. The Distinguished Flying Cross is one level below the Medal of Honor. Also, when John was in charge of the military, he came and settled in the Town of Hanson. John did many things for many people, as well as civic organizations in the Town of Hanson. He was a quiet one. He was the type individual, you could go to him and say, "John, can you make a contribution here to maybe one of the civic organizations or one of the sports teams in town?" Or, even for that matter, hail to how many people in the Town of Hanson. Many people in the Town of Hanson, for one reason or another, couldn't afford to have their vehicles fixed. They would go to John, John would put it on the cuff. Now, that is unheard of nowadays. Not only the repairs of the vehicles, but the gasoline. Also, over the years, John has made contributions or given vehicles to people, used vehicles, because they couldn't afford a vehicle to get to work or couldn't afford a vehicle to get the family to point A to point B. Many of these exploits were unheard of. As I said, John was a very quiet person. He loved the Town of Hanson, and I think this is only appropriate for the Town of Hanson to recognize him. Thank you.
Any further comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article twenty signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it unanimously. Article twenty is adopted. Article twenty-one, Mr. Young?
I move that the town vote to transfer $2,000 from free cash to provide a marker for the memorial square.
Seconded. Mr. Young?
If the preceding article is approved, which it was, these funds will be used to purchase an appropriate marker and fund expenses associated with the dedication, estimated amount $2,000.
Any questions or concerns? Again, the veterans' agent, please.
If this article passes, we are looking right now to schedule the dedication probably the first two weeks of September. It'll be the corner of Winter Street and Liberty Street, and everybody will be invited and will be getting the information out to the town at that time. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article twenty-one signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article twenty-one is adopted. Article twenty-two? Yes, ma'am.
I move for the town to vote to accept the provision of Mass General Law, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 22 through 22E, to also include 22F.
Seconded. This is a local option provision for the requirements for the disabled veterans
under Mass General Law 59, Section 5, clauses 22 through 22F.
Any questions or comments on this article? All those in favor, all those in favor of Article twenty-two signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article twenty-two is adopted. Article twenty-three, Mr. Clemmons?
I move that the town vote to place the Smith House Elsie Conservation Area in Accessus Map 20, Procel 1-1, under the care and custody of the Conservation Commission for the purposes of wildlife recreation and forestry.
Do we have a second?
Seconded.
Mr. Clemmons?
It may seem odd to request a conservation area be placed under conservation, but this is really a housekeeping thing for reasons that are shrouded in history, that it was town property but never actually placed under care and custody of conservation. After the Burridge Pond Wildlife Management Area came into existence, they recognized that that whole area was very important, and when they found out it wasn't officially conservation land, they spent, they gave the town $250,000 to make sure it was protected. But now, they come every year to make sure it's still being managed well, and we're in the opposition of no one's managing it. The Conservation Commission would like to volunteer to do that management, because our phone rings anytime there's a question anyway, so we might as well make it official. And this will simply make it easier this coming Wednesday when we get our next order.
Terrific. And I have been advised that this requires a two-thirds vote. Any other questions or comments on this article? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article twenty-three signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
Nay.
The ayes have it by the required two-thirds vote. Article twenty-four, Mr. Mitchell?
I move the town vote to reauthorize the following revolving accounts, for short, to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53E and a half, as printed in the warrant.
Do we have a second?
Seconded.
Mr. Mitchell?
These are the annual revolving accounts which have been consolidated into one article to streamline the warrant process. Additional use have been added, uses have been added to the Conservation Commission revolving account.
Any questions or comments on Article twenty-four? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article twenty-four signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. And now, I will make a motion, Article 25, to recess this meeting until May 21st at 10 o'clock in the morning for the purposes of holding an election at McQuon School.
Seconded.
Seconded. All those in favor of Article 25 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article 25 is adopted, and the annual town meeting is hereby adjourned or recessed. I can't believe you got away with it.